We'll keep coming in, but if you all were timed up to get up on time and get here, I certainly might get started for you. Um, as you, are you okay? All right, we're good to go. Our film crew back there. Um, if I, if you don't mind joining me in the pledge allegiance as we start the meeting.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Uh, thanks for being here for the budget presentation. Before I start that, um, I don't know if anyone's heard, Mr. Rayco, Bill Rayco, his wife passed away. Um, so just keep your thoughts and prayers. Mr. Rayco's been very, very active with the community, as you all know, for a long time. And, um, and his wife has been fighting cancer for quite a long time. And, um, so, you know, been thinking about him a lot the last couple of days. So, you guys can keep him in your minds, him and family. All right. Budgets. I know, I know we're gonna have a mixed crowd in here on the budgets. What I'm gonna ask you to do is bear with me. Uh, I'm gonna go through the slide presentation. Once I'm finished with the presentation, we'll open up and we'll do the, the questions and comments and answer anything we can for you. Okay? Uh, we're gonna start with our goal today. The goal is to provide you an overview of the budget, to provide you with the process we use and we're currently under as we're working through the budget, the critical considerations that went into it, uh, the key elements, and then the budget components. I'm gonna give you some comparisons, just so we have a pretty good idea compared to other communities where we stack up. And then we'll open it up for Q and A. Uh, when we do the Q and A, I'm gonna ask you to come up to the microphone, state your name and your property address, and then you can ask any question or make any comment you'd like to. I would ask you to be respectful. I know, you know, we can tend to be passionate, passion's good, but just show respect, not only for me, but for others in the room. We're, we're really a, a strong community, and sometimes I think we lose that, our passion. So, uh, work with me a little bit on that. We'll certainly try to answer any of your questions. Okay. You start, when we start looking at the budgets each year, we, we, first thing we have to do is, is figure out what our starting point is. Uh, the starting point for us is always the vision. Uh, the vision being Ocean Pine is being a premier resort community, offering exceptional value and quality of life to property owners who are diverse in age, economic status, and interest. That's always my starting point when we start the budget. You know, it's easy to say, well, we have to, it's very easy to make recommendations or to decide you're gonna move in a different direction if you own the company yourself. I don't own the company. I work for you guys. The board is representative of you, and in that, we all work towards the vision statement. Okay? So, so as we build the budget, that has to be one of our guiding persons we look at in the construction of. Critical considerations. Uh, this year, when we started our budget, some things that we wanted to make sure that we kept, kept focused on was reasonable bud- budgeting without jeopardizing the future. You know, knowing that we were in a mix of the capital, uh, some critical capital investments, uh, knowing that, that we do have members in our community that, that are still, you know, we're sensitive to the needs and the fix incomes for a portion of our community. We're sensitive to, to a lot of the different economic impacts, uh, that are faced with it. Um, we also, through that thought process, uh, we made a collective decision not to introduce any capital spending for you. Okay? There's no major projects being introduced, there's no new capital items, there's still the, the replacement items that come up, but we decided to not introduce any new, knowing that we had a, a lot of, uh, spending going on for the critical elements that are underway right now. We'll go over the, the budget process that we used. That's Art pushing. We argue who's actually pushing the car. If I could get the other guy on the other side pushing it down, that will be us working through it, right, Art? Um, we started, we, we start our budgets, and this is the same every year, and in September, I start talking to the staff about the budget. Uh, we start, and our regular staff is discussing, you know, where are you? And if you remember, September, we finished kind of the height of the season when we have most of our residents here, you know, most of the folks, the summer, we kind of ballooned up a little bit. Uh, so we, we, our numbers are, we know where we are from, from our financials, from the understanding of the yacht club, the golf, the major amenities. That's a good time when we're bringing our departments ahead in and we start taking the tires, okay, what did we do well, what haven't we done well, what things should we need to consider when we move forward. Uh, one of the things I always task the team with, uh, at each department level is, is to put them on past from this standpoint. What do you need to keep your area of responsibility up and running? That's their starting point. What do you need to keep the doors open for your area? Next thing is, what would you want, what would be your next level, your wants? Things you'd like to have, uh, whether it's, it's, uh, equipment, personnel, programming, whatever it may be, what would they, what types of things would you look at? The third item I ask them to look at is, if money was no object, what would you do? If you owned your area of responsibility, if it was yours, what would you do? And what, and, and all I'm trying to do is generate some thought process for them, so they're not limited to say, oh, we're only focused on budget, or we're only focused on, or what I heard my neighbor say, or, or what I think Bob wants, or what I think the board wants. I want to really expand and look at, because everyone's working with you all each and every day, either at the rec department, over at one of the clubs, at golf, what types of things do you feel and see within your department? Through that process, uh, we've had a capital project worksheet that, uh, we've been using for a couple of years. Actually, Bill Rayco was one of the first to introduce it. We modified it this year and we put it online, just to help improve our process. Um, the department heads were able to, to open it up online, fill it out, and electronically transfer it back. And that's now included in all the budget books in the back of each section on what their requests were. And it's just a, again, we're trying to make these little improvements every day, each week, each month, each year. This is one of the improvements we made. I know it's hard to read there, but, uh, the board members have them, as well as Pledge of Finance, and, uh, those sheets are in the book, uh, in the lobby area. October. Uh, we began receiving the budget requests back from each department. Okay? We get, we start getting those in, we start taking a look at those, want to say, we, Art and I do the majority of it, sitting down, going through them, and then we, and then we, uh, continue our meetings, except instead of a collective meeting with all the departments and staff meeting, we're, we're bringing in the individual department heads and trying to understand what they submitted and why, how it impacts them, why they feel it's needed in their budget. Um, at the same time, uh, in October, we received guidance from the Board of Directors. Each year, uh, the, the board puts their items together, things they'd like to see us include when they, when we develop our budget. The guidance this year, now, it's in paragraph form, I tried to just take kind of the bullets, the top items out of each. Uh, continue with five-year funding plan. Five-year funding plan was planned, developed, uh, and implemented, um, four years ago. This will be the fifth year of it. It's the, the funding solution for our capital projects, any of the major capital projects. Um, realistic amenity buddi- realistic amenity budgeting. Say that three times. Um, one of the things I really want us to focus on is take a hard look at, at, at our amenities, and specifically yacht club, golf, aquatics, and, and see how they're impacting us. As you all know, we, we've had a, a rough year specifically in golf, wanted to make sure we were really taking a hard look at those numbers and, and delving. Every year they asked us to look at it, this year was, was, was extremely important, given some of the losses we've had for obvious reasons. Um, salary increases, uh, one of the things is, uh, it wasn't recommended, it wasn't, um, the board didn't directly for any increases, but they did say, if you are going to have any increases, you have a cap of 3% in the aggregate. When, and what that means is, overall, if you look at salaries, you need cap it at, at 3%. Uh, major projects need to be specifically analyzed, if we have any new major projects. We elected this year not to have any new major projects. Uh, business plans, executive summer business cases should be provided, uh, this year with, with, when we do our budget, and we actually met those. Uh, November. November, we received budget recommendations from the V and F Committee. In addition to the board guidance, uh, we have a budget finance committee. Budget finance committee actually, uh, gets together, they meet regularly like all our committees do, and, and they watch the monthly reports, but what they do is say collectively, got together and came up with what they thought were important factors to consider when building this year's budget. Um, we, the whole time, we're continuing to meet with our staff. Uh, we're looking at each department, we're looking at what their, what their recommendations were, uh, maybe asking them to go back and get some more backup information, uh, something to be, but I don't understand why you request this, or I don't understand the cost associated this, or I don't understand the benefit associated with it. Those type of dialogues are continually going on with the staff. December is when we actually start pulling all the elements together and start seeing what the impact, with the, in, in aggregate, how the numbers are starting to look. Um, we, we make any necessary changes at that time. I said, we, uh, Art, Carmine, and myself, um, as we sat with the department heads, we're really piking out, that we're trying to see what the bottom line's gonna be for it. Uh, and then we, towards the end of that, which is really over the Christmas break, uh, we actually put the budget binders together. And if no one's seen one, there, there are three and a half to four inch binders with all the material in it, uh, and we create these for board members, and we create a set for, uh, the budget finance committee to review. Okay? They're distributed, uh, they were distributed the first week of January. Okay, the budget books are delivered. Uh, sat with the board, gave an overview of what's included in their books, gave them an overview of what we were considering, what, you know, some of our thought processes that went into what they're, they're reviewing. Uh, at the same time, the budget finance meetings begin. They take a, a week or so, we start reviewing it, and then we start to sit down with meetings. And when I said we, um, what we did was, we basically spent two full days, sat with the budget finance committee, and I sit with them, Art sits with them, and the department head. And we go tab by tab through the book on each department, and the committee asked myself, Art, or, um, the department head for input on what's in there, why it's in there, what their, what their thought process was, uh, when we built that. So that's a rather long process. I will tell you, this year of the three years, this year was probably the, the very best, at least from my perspective, working with the budget finance committee. Uh, very engaging, uh, very respectful, it was great discourse, uh, and it really worked out well, because it, it, the, the positive interaction, and when I say positive, doesn't mean there was agreement, because there certainly wasn't, but it's very positive exchange, helped us go back and go look at some things in more detail, uh, consider things maybe a little differently. And again, every time you get some more eyes on it, you know, we all can learn from that. So that worked out very, very well. Um, and then from there, uh, the board meeting budget process begins. So, spend the one week where we interact with budget finance committee, we get their recommendations, uh, then, uh, we start our meetings with the board the following week. Budget finance committee actually issues to the board additional, uh, finance recommendations to the board of things that they should be looking at when they're going through the budget with us. Start the budget, uh, process with our board of directors, and we start going back and forth with, with all the items that have, you know, page by page, answering any questions, uh, tried to, to clarify anything that, that wasn't put in there, um, as effectively as it could, and then look at if there's any changes we need to make. February, and this is where we are right now, is a pledge of presentation to our membership. Trying to give you an idea of where we are in the process, give you an update what the numbers look like. Uh, it's certainly been reported in the papers with the assessment, uh, kind of try to share some breakdown on that and, and some thoughts that went behind it. Because not everyone attends, and, and actually, the majority of people don't attend any or all of the meetings. So it's hard to understand what went into it. Okay, some key elements that, that went into the budget. No new capital items this year. Okay? We felt, uh, because we had, had a lot of major capital projects underway, uh, now, and they'll roll through, uh, 13, 14 budget year, putting any new items on, on the table just didn't make a whole lot sense to us. It just, I mean, there's items we'd like to add, there's items that we think we should add in the future, but right now, it's, it, our, our whole goal was kind of slow down a little bit, take a breath, and finish what we started. The community's overwhelmingly been supportive of, example, is the yacht club. We want to make sure we deliver that. We want to make sure we deliver it as we promised we would, on time and on budget. So just kind of take a half step back, slow down, and, and deliver. We did make a, a recommendation in the budget for an increase in our membership. Now, what the rea- what drove this, and, and I've had some, some comments from folks, I can't believe you're making, uh, recommendations for any increases. What drove this, the one, the areas that we made the recommendations in are the areas that have been five or more years with absolutely no increase in fees. So a program, a, an amenity, something that we're offering, every year, you know, costs associated with offering products or, or programs increased, we've had no increases on it. So when you start to look at it, you start to go, well, does this really make sense? Is, it, I know things are a little tough, but they're, at the same time, realistically, five plus years with no increase in costs that are passed on? The costs to offer them have increased, they just haven't been passed on. So we made that adjustment this year and put it in our recommendation. The areas that have had increases in the last five years, we did not include. So, examples on the bottom. Beach club parking, we had an increase in tent. Well, we did not recommend any tricks this year. Um, pool memberships in twelve, or pool tennis memberships, uh, the combined membership weekly package was increased last year. We didn't make the recommendation this year. So we really tried to take a look at and sort of pick which ones made sense to us. So that's where the 5%. Now, please understand, and, and folks are saying, well, 5% is a lot of money. 5% is a $2 increase in one item, a $5 increase in another, um, $15. So we had some of the, the more expensive ones, they went up $25 per year. Uh, the, the one that's, has the biggest impact would be probably the golf, uh, $100. I think it's a $100 increase approximately, bigger 5%. But all the rest were, were, were in more on the lowering, uh, range. So when you start to look at it, 5% sounds like a lot of money. $5 or $10 for, for a program for the year just seemed realistic to me when we were looking at. And please understand, I'm not saying dollars don't add up, I'm just saying we did take a hard look. Uh, and we stuck to, the other thing with the 5%, one of the things we started to do is look at each program and look at incremental increases for each. But then it comes into, well, if, if, if Mr. Howie's doing a program, and I've increased him 10%, okay? But from a reference to Deborah, and I only increased his program that he uses by 3%, we made an arbitrary decision of what was the basis of it. So it made more sense to do a 5% across the board. It seemed like a more reasonable and respectable way to do it for everybody. Don't make me point you all out. Uh, the five-year funding plan, uh, this is a funding solution that was adopted four years ago by the board, uh, was created to meet the objective of, of replacing some of our, our, our major repairs, renovations, upgrades to our fiscal assets. Uh, the board's been supportive of that for the last four years. The board, this was one of the driver's things that the board said, continue with this year, the fifth and final year of the five-year program. Talked a little bit about the business plans, they were requested to be provided, uh, we did so, uh, for aquatics, we did so for yacht club, Philly Casper Golf, provided a month-to-month breakdown of their activities. The board's asked me to go back and look and, and, and work with Casper, maybe find out if it's where we get a more detailed plan from them, uh, for the, um, golf side of the house. So we are going back and we're, and we're trying to work with them, see if we can't, uh, get some more, even more input there. Board certainly recognizes with the losses we've, we've had, and that's one we have to take a really hard look at. Payroll, uh, salary and wages excluding payroll costs, which represent the most significant part of our, our, our budget, only increased 1.7% over last year's budget level. Okay, remember, I, I had three, it's what the board said cap it at, we're actually 1.7. It's actually 5.4% over estimated actual. The, the confusion that comes in there, just because we budget for a position, or, or we budget, or for anything in this case, but for payroll here, we budget for a position, if we have a transition, if someone leaves and we don't fill it right away, we may have an open slot for four months, five months, six months, which would reduce the overall year-over-year actuals to budget. So we really try to manage that, being payroll costs are some of the highest. When we look at filling positions, maybe first, we don't go on hiring screen, though we have new position, we're gonna fill it by May of second, we really try to take a look at, fill it when it's the most appropriate to do so. Great example was, uh, our facility manager this year, that we promised and, and said last year we would get in, um, headed at position to help us oversee our facilities, certainly with the money we've been spending, this facility, the money that underway for the yacht club, making sure that we have the right maintenance plan, we have the right scheduling to maintain the facilities, uh, better than we have in the past. Uh, the board did approve last year to, to hire someone for that position, we didn't hire him until the mid-year. So it has a, a positive impact on the budget, if you don't hire him May first, uh, obviously you have six months of non-filled positions, so you don't have that expense. And that's where the estimated actual versus the budget differences come in sometimes. So it's not an exact size. The other thing that, um, we looked at is, is the drainage funding, uh, a funding solution. As most know, we had a drainage project, which is, uh, on the golf course, holds 11 and 12 in Kingdom Lane. That was the, the drainage in that area. Uh, we, we had an ongoing drainage project around the golf course for, for several years. Um, it's a, it's a project that's needed with 1,400 homes, since the orig- original, uh, golf course was filled, being built around it, the drainage has certainly changed. Every time you build a home, you're changing the water flow. Um, the drainage project has been a, has had a positive impact. What we did was take a look at, are, are we hitting the right holes at the right time in the right areas? And we took a year off, we got back to it this year, um, and 11 and 12 in Kingdom Lane are, were, we felt were the worst impacted, so we went ahead and, and addressed those issues. However, we did change, uh, the funding mechanism, uh, in the way we funded the project, and in this particular case, uh, the recommendation was funding it self-funding, basically we borrowed from ourselves and then paid back over an amortized loan. So that's with the 553 project, and, and there's, uh, part of the payback, pay ourselves back, is, is in the issued budget number. Okay, budget components. Uh, there's, uh, I get a lot of questions of what's in the budget, like what's the budget made up of? And, and you'll get some differing opinions. Um, we, I try to make it as clear and, and understanding for everyone, so they understand all the elements that go into the budget. We have our operations, we have our capital, and a small piece for, for deficit recovery. All those funnel into the construction of the budget, and at the bottom line, and that's what impacts or, or that's what the end result ends up with, our salary dollars. Operating departments, to serve one's clear, when we say operations, I've had folks, what does that actually mean? Operations is inclusive of fire, police, CMS, public works, maintenance, CPI, admin, finance, uh, membership, recreation and parks, all these pieces fall into the operational side of the house. And so, okay, well, I understand that, is there anything else? Yes. We have all our amenities, payments, please fall under the, the operations side of the house. So, now you're including golf, um, including Terence Grill there, yacht club, aquatics, tennis, beach club, marinas, all those items are included. So when you're, when, when I talk about the operations side of the house, it's all in, all those departments, all those components, all those pieces. The next item of the three would be our capital. Okay? The capital part of it is inclusive of reserves, new capital expenditures, and, and debt or, or principal payments. Give you examples, there's sports core loan, uh, small loan we still have on the southside fire station, there's a debt payment we have on those. And these have all been in the budgets for years, so you, you point the, all your financials of finance, I'm just kind of giving you an overview of what's in the budget. There's a small, uh, piece that actually is carved out for deficit reduction, it, it's, it's an amount that gets put in that helps reduce if we have any operational deficits. Uh, it all says names, those type of things. So it's like a small savings account that, that builds up, and the board can apply that name to deficits. Okay, assessment dollars. Broke down for this year, how much of your, of this year's assessment dollar and how it's broken down in the budget, how it looks like the funding matches up, just to make it a little easier when you look at it. The amenities, uh, basically, uh, of your assessment dollars, the proposed assessment dollars for the year. Okay? Remember, I'm talking about 13, 14 budgets, everything's proposed at this point. Um, $1 of it goes to tennis. Uh, marinas, we actually have a reduction against our assessment dollar, because marinas generate income, so we have a positive variance or positive against our assessment of $12. Beach parking, we have a positive. Brackets are negative, if they're not brackets, they're positive. Um, golf, aquatics, both require assessment dollars to continue to fund them. Uh, beach club is a positive to budget, so it's a reduction. Uh, and then yacht club, $12. Needed to offset based on what's budgeted. The bottom line is a positive to your budget number of $19. But please understand, this is proposed. A year like this year, uh, when we budget with some of the losses specifically at our major, it, side on the golf, those numbers end up not working, because we end up having to put more towards than what we originally budgeted. Okay? So these are the budget side. Admin, public work, and I broke all these down more deeply on the prior slides, but admin, public works, fire department, police, wreck and parks, all are on the operational side. They're not the revenue side of the house, you can see how they break down. They're all cost to the association. Okay? They're not typically generating, they're, they're, um, I looked at those from the operations side, there's no revenue. Now, with that being said, we do offset, fire department gets some grant funds, police department gets some grant funds, uh, wreck and parks generate some money, it's going on bus trips and some other advanced activities they do, so there is some, some if income there, but this is pretty much how they tax their assessment based on how the budget Reserve funding. This is how the reserve funding for this year breaks down, and I, I hope you can see from the back, I'm sorry, this slide's a little darker from my screen this morning, it's looking very good. Uh, but basically, we have almost $4 million in reserve funding this year, going into the different components. Uh, when you look at reserve funding, uh, some of it's replacement reserves, replacing, you know, replacement reserves could include replacing a backhoe, a pickup truck, a computer, a table, it, it's a sundry of items. Bulkhead replacement, oh, sorry, bulkhead replacement, uh, we have money going aside for that. Uh, roads, uh, we have money being set aside for roads. Now, if you all remember, the mo- the roads monies, uh, the 222 there is actually Ross Pastory money from casino. We used the casino money last year, or in the current year we're in, to pay for the roads. Um, 139, that is the deficit reduction, uh, that, that piece that's taken out, put into that account. Uh, five-year funding solution, so approximately a million dollars going into that. And to recall, the last four years, it's been talked about in great detail. I could, I could have waited for this meeting, Hemant Gomshank, for those that know him, I mean, he could talk for three hours on that, and he has several times, so I'm giving the reader's digest version of it. Um, and then a, a small piece of it, uh, 19, almost 20,000 for the drainage. Okay, proposed assessment program, uh, program, break down, okay, for the numbers. Uh, you're looking at, at $30 is associated with five-year funding plan, that's, this is the fifth and final year of that funding solution. Uh, $3 is associated with the drainage project, the $553,000 we were talking about. $10 goes to all the other operations, which is a total, a proposed assessment, which is 43. What I want to point out here is the 30 that the community's known about, it's been supported by the last four boards, and this supported by the last four boards, and this is the fifth and final year, it was established to make sure that we package some of the big issues, we don't have a big ticket item come due with a large assessment all at one time. Drainage, this is a new solution for drainage, amortizing it and going over a twenty-five year term. Operations, last year I asked for zero in operations, this year it's ten dollars. Given the fact, and we all feel it, everything's gone up in price, our fuel costs, our fuel costs running trucker, every cost associated with running the operations gone up in the last two, three, four years. And you all know, you build at home, the ten-dollar increase that we're asking for is to help offset that. If you look at over a two-year period, and this is why I had someone ask me, said, I can't believe you'd ask for an increase this year. You know what, folks, I didn't want to, but when we're looking at it, we look at everything's been increasing, and we have a constant increase, from the ops side, which is sort of the big, all of the departments, fire, police, everything, ten dollars did not see my raise over a two-year period, like forty-two cents a month over two years. So I felt it was a reasonable request. Now, the board hasn't approved again, this is just where we are, what was proposed. Other areas that are being talked about, and again, they're proposed, the board's really wanting to be sure to make sure we're going with right, anytime you have, you're stacked up with losses, like we, like we had this year in a couple of our operations, taking a second look, I think that's also why the budget process is taking a little bit longer this year. Historically, by now, we would be wrapped up and presenting the final numbers for your review, and then making small modifications. There's some other things that we're looking a little closer at. We changed the drainage solution this year, in a way, remember I said it was the three dollars, twenty-five year, and years past, we had done it with a thirty-dollar assessment, you know, out-of-year assessment to pay for it, it'll actually pay for the drainage much, much quicker. That's a solution that's still, because we did it in the past, we're just looking, is it likely to change that course of action or not? If we elected to do that, it would have, it could have a twenty-seven dollar impact with one this year's assessment. Now, please understand, doesn't mean it's going to, it's only where the board's still talking about these items. Obtaining a hundred thousand dollars from the county, a hundred thousand more, and this one, I've got to tell you, of the four that we put up here, I'm going to share with you, they're being kicked around, this one is probably the one that I feel the strongest about from a standpoint of, we as a community don't get twice the funding that we probably could or should from the county, you know, with supporting some of our elements. The board strongly recognizes that, and would like to see effort this year step up, and the board's willing to assist in seeking additional funding from the county for police service, fire, anywhere that the costs were spent, since we do provide a lot, our police force does mutual aid with the county, with the state police, not with the Ocean Pines, but to surrounding communities. Fire department response, UAA response. We offer a lot of wrecking parks programs that are open to the public, which it just is in Ocean Pines, so the feeling there is go towards the county commissions and ask for some additional funding. That would, if we could get that amount of money, it would have a positive impact, or a twelve-dollar impact on the bottom line of the assessment. Matching marina performance, we're having a little bit of a debate on this one, the marina performance, the challenge we had this year is we have some construction going on, and you know, around the yacht club, so I try to hold the number a little bit lower the board thinks, I'm sandbagging a little bit there, I need to plus that up, so we're kind of going back and forth on that one some, that the community is maybe we could sell more fuel, given everything that's changing over there, so that one's under consideration, we're still talking about it. Road depreciation, this one's drawn, there seems to be a lot of question about it. We had, we calculated, it's an accounting function to calculate depreciation on your financials, for everything we do. However, we don't charge the membership an increase in assessment for that road's depreciation because we've had alternative budgets, like state pasture tax money that was being contributed to. I looked at the numbers, the county's lost approximately sixteen million dollars in the last four years in road funding. Obviously, they don't get it, we don't get it. So we've applied our casino funding, when you apply casino funding, that means it doesn't impact you from an assessment increase. But, this is something that's being looked at, should we be funding that ourselves, since we haven't had road funding in the last four years, is it something we should be looking at for future? All the adjustments back and forth are about fifty-four dollars, is what they make up. Again, that doesn't mean on top of the current assessment proposal, maybe some of the owners say, we're not going to go with yours, let's just do the, I mean, there's a lot of things being kicked around, but these are things the board is looking in greater detail to see how it impacts. Okay, other things I want to share with you, because I know a lot of people, you know, I say, I've had people expressing concerns about the assessment increase. And so, all right, let me go back and look, are we being unreasonable, how's it compared to surrounding communities? We all, if you're West County, we're all going to pay the same county tax rate, you all know that went up a little bit this year. We're also going to pay the same state, because we're all American. So all the communities and the county, they're where we're exactly at. Here's where we compare to other communities when you're looking at assessment versus either town tax or other HOA fees. Snow Hill, point eight-six per a hundred, point eight-two for a hundred dollars of assessed value, for Pocmo, Berlin, point six-eight, Ocean City, point four-five-eight-five. Let me give you just, I'm going to give you an example on that in a second, but some differences. Pocmo has something unique, it's point nine over non-owner occupied. So that would, if you're trying to do comparative analysis, that would impact us when almost forty-five percent of our owners don't live here, so they would have to hire if you lived in Pocmo, as, when you're trying to apple, apple comparison. What I did was I kind of screened down here, Ocean City, they have room tax and some other kind of condo fees for a lot of their properties, so there was no way I could show you that in any great detail, so I just went with the straight city tax. If you do that comparison, I went to Berlin, it's close, most people know someone who lives in Berlin, give you an example of what it is. So a two-hundred thousand dollar house in Berlin, your town tax would be thirteen hundred and sixty dollars. If you compare it to our assessment, our proposed assessment for this year at nine sixteen, you can see we're far less expensive than living in the town of Berlin, if you compare that to the other town, we're pretty economical. Then I looked at HOAs, look at the homeowners association in the area, because we're not in town, even though we're a little closer to a town than a traditional HOA, but how do we compare there? These are what Glen Riddle, Oyster Harbor, Decatur Farms, Indian Creek and Lighthouse Sound actually have for their assessment. Now, in Riddle Farm, takes care of their three grand, you can see, wow, that's a big difference, they do take care of long time, not unlike the park here, where they have a separate assessment for it. Oyster Harbor's the maintenance of the primary areas. Decatur Farm's pretty close to the second one. And then, that's probably the closest comparison. Indian Creek, Lighthouse Sound basically pay for their entryways and a little bit of landscaping, their lighting on the front areas and stuff. So if you try to compare us from a, what we offer, what we have availability, five pools, yacht club, twenty-five, beach club, there's really no comparison. But when you look at your sheer dollars, that's what I'm just trying to point out. So really, from an economic standpoint, we're certainly, I feel we're certainly in a very, very good position comparatively to all the surrounding, other surrounding communities. This one took a little time to get together, because this is why I heard, now this, please understand, this does not impact our entire community, this is a segment of the community. When I say segment, this typically the more mature retired part of our community are impacted by social security. Increases or decreases or no increases, all are impacted there. Well, what I did was, so, look, this last couple of years, that seemed to be a comparison that I would receive a lot, well, social security's not changing, I'm losing money. But, okay, well, I need to look at that, maybe you'd sense of that, it's like, how's that actually stacked up? Lot of numbers on here. The right three, or the right columns here are the ones that will draw your attention to, and these will go off of the website, so you'll certainly have access to going as much deeper as you want. But, if you look at it, what I've done here is, that's the year, that we're talking about for this, this whole row. This was our assessment that year, we had no increase. If you read across, social security increased that year two-point-four percent. Nine-ten, seven-twenty-five, we increased our assessment seven-sixty-three, or thirty-eight dollars, thirty of which, and you notice this thirty stays the same now, this is when we started our five-year funding plan for our major capital improvements. You go across eight, the other is the operational side and any other piece that goes in there. So our increase was five-point-two in total, but without the five-year funding solution, our operational increase was one-point-one percent, compared to social security at five-point-seven that particular year. Eleven, two thousand and ten, eleven, seven-sixty-three, eight-to-eight, forty-five dollar increase, thirty for the funding solution. Fifteen, all other, which meant total was five-point-nine, take out the thirty dollars, without the five-year funding solution, we're up two percent, that year social security had no increase, so we outpaced social security that year. Eleven-twelve, eight-to-eight, eight-forty-three, thirty-five dollar change, again, five-year funding solution, we asked for a five-dollar operational increase. Total is four-point-three, we had a point-seven percent increase, comparatively, social security had no increase that year. Two thousand and twelve, thirteen, eight-forty-three to eight-seventy-three, thirty dollars, we had a thirty-dollar increase, five-year funding solution, we had, once again, no increase on the operational side. Total was three-point-six, without the five-year funding solution, we had zero, social security went up three-point-six last year. Thirteen-fourteen, eight-seventy-three, this is the proposed number right now, not the final, it's proposed. It's a forty-three dollar increase, thirty of which is the five-year funding solution, thirteen is all other, operational plus the three-year drainage, or three dollars for the drainage. Four-point-nine, one-point-seven, without the five-year, matches social security five, or one-point-seven. Who's going to draw that, I wanted to make sure I pointed that out, is this is what I get, this is, seems to be the item I get a lot of comparisons to, not me, this is what a portion of our membership brings it to. So if I, if you do the average, the six-year totals, okay, without the five-year funding solution, we've gone up five and a half percent in the, on the operational side. Social security had gone up in that same time frame thirteen-point-four percent. Okay? Six-year averages, if you take the six, divide by, total, divide by six, so you get what the average is, we're only, we're up less than one percent over that six-year period for each year, on average, social security was up two-point-two-three. I think that's important, because that's the comparison a lot of people tend to bring to me and say, well, my increases are, you know, you're spending more than my increases I'm getting. I don't know your financial situation, but I did listen, I did go back and look to make sure that what we were proposing seemed reasonable, seemed like it was in line, didn't get, we weren't doing something that really didn't make sense from a financial ticket, this is what it ended up with. Okay. Going back, a couple of closing slides. Board said, continued five-year funding plan, we did that. Board said realistic budget, realistic amenity budgeting, we did, we did that, supported by the summary business plans. Salary increases capped at six, I told you we're at one-point-seven. Major projects should be specifically analyzed, we certainly did it, we didn't put any new projects, we looked at existing ones underway, we didn't recommend any new. Again, we want to slow down this year, take a breath, make sure we clearly get finished what we told you we would finish this year. Business plans, we put the, summary business plans were included. Okay, where we are today is our public hearing now, that's where you all got to provide some feedback for, tell us what you think, give us some rationale, are we aimed in the right direction or not? We have a majority of our board members here, here, it's not just me, we're all listening to what you're going to share with us. There's another board working session that's already scheduled for February twelfth, it's going to be at the boardroom at five, and that's just to continue with a additional input, either from you or some of the things that the board has been continuing to discuss. And then at the regular board meeting at the end of this month, is when the final vote on the budget is. Okay, I'm going to open the board, questions and comments. Okay, what I'm going to please ask you to do, come to the microphone, we'll make sure it's on. State your name and address, your property address, ask questions or comments, okay? If I can't answer it for you, we'll capture it and I'll get you the answer back, okay? Please, let's try and have a good dialogue, especially my friend in the back. Chairman? I'm just playing.
I know, it's a wrong name.
Sure, I, I think enough yelling.
Aaron.
He's going to get up, let's see, oh, I'm ready. I figured, no worries. I'm going to go. I'm going to make sure this is a little.
All right, that can be heard. Here it is.
Knew it worked, we tested it.
Oh, thanks. Hi, Carol Ludwig, five C and five Berlin. Just a question, the business plans.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we get to see those, or what are the projections like with the business plans?
Yeah.
What does that include?
The visit, they are in the budget books, the business plans are a five, six-page summary, general description, SWOT analysis, what are the other pieces in those, sorry?
Right, and whether, is that, there are some questions, but, one of the questions, the reason I put that up is the, there's a, you know, a feeling going around that the yacht club may not open, is that part of the business plan?
No, no.
Okay.
Okay, that's a good question. The board has asked me to go back and look at, if we were to, as you all know, the yacht club's closed right now, we're going to start a project on the pool, on the pool side of the building. The board's asked me to go back and consider, if we leave, if we leave the yacht club closed from here on out, let the partners contract and come in with their demo, and not only take care of the pool deck area, but just demo everything and start construction, A, is there any savings to us pass on because they're not redeploying assets, we, redeploying being the contractors? B, operationally, how's it impact us for the year? So right now, no, we're not saying it's open or closed, I'm going to tell you, I want it open, my business plan says open, everything I've submitted says open. The board just wants me to look at it, take another look at a couple of different scenarios before they put the final approval.
My concern was the consideration for if we had anything scheduled, what kind of an impact would that have on us, with people? If we have to contest on thing, I certainly would be, if I had a wedding coming up, I would certainly be talking some type of financial issue. And the other thing is, so many of us, I was one of them, that supported the yacht club referendum and worked with our friends, and one of the biggest things was the fact that we were going to do like a cut-and-cut, that the yacht club is going to be open because those are the months that we make money.
Yes, ma'am.
And not only that, it was part of the referendum that it would stay open, it would be available, and I think if we're looking at making money off the marina, a lot of reasons people go there is because of the convenience to get a drink and do that while you're getting gas in your boot. So that was the only thing, I think ramifications, I for one would question, you know, in the referendum, it was clear, pretty clearly stated and gave a lot of people a comfortable feeling that we were going to have it open, so that's the only consideration, I would think.
Got you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cobb.
Good morning, how are you?
I'm well, sir.
Good.
Name and address, sir.
We used to work together, that's how we do, well, actually, we worked separately, I was in a different unit. Jack Collins, Skyline Court, Harbor Village. I rise in opposition to the forty-three dollar increase, and I'll tell you why. Did a great job, very comprehensive, you covered a lot of territory, you were trained well, Bob, you really were. Years ago, well, my wife, who brought me here, was born and raised on Eastern Shore. Her roots go back about three hundred years. And we fell in love with this place, because she dragged me down here with our children. And we fell in love with this place because she dragged me down here with our children. But she married a guy from Baltimore, and we raised our children in Baltimore. When we got to a point where our children were well on their way to some success in their life, we decided that perhaps we wanted to live some other place other than Baltimore. So we looked around and we came back to the eastern shore with my wife. And we looked at Ocean Pines because of the, the sense of community, the togetherness, it's a great place. You know, being a city kid, you like a lot of people around you. And at the same time, you still have the beach, you still have the amenities that the environment can, can provide. So th, this place means a lot to us and we wanna stay. However, I, like many of us here, are no longer productive, meaning that I don't have a job anymore. I have to rely on situations that I have put in place to protect me and my family and my wife to stay here. I am receiving pressure from the federal level in terms of increased taxes on investment that I've had that are generating cash flow to allow me to stay here. I'm receiving pressures as all of these folks here are at the state level, as it applies to these taxes. Any kind of income that moves seems to be taxable. And now, in this particular legislative time or process, there's talking, there is talk about a gas tax whereby now I'm gonna be fixed, and all of us are gonna be fixed with an additional gas tax. Our wealth has decreased primarily because of the assessed values of our house has gone down, and that's a real consideration that I have to take into my head as to how I can live here. Yet my taxes have gone up on the property side, isn't that amazing? My taxes have gone up, but my value has gone down. Amazing. So I'm squeezed, as everyone else in this room is squeezed. And yet, I look at this and I see an assessment that I think should be delayed. We're in very difficult times, ladies and gentlemen, we really are. We may think that everything is gonna be okay, we're not sure yet. If you look at the, gee, I love, I love the investment side of our economy, so I pay a lot of attention to it. If you, if you look at the information that is provided by the business networks, things aren't right yet. Everybody says, oh, well, the stock market's up. That's a trading market, that's not a wealth market. I trade in the market, I don't depend on it to create wealth for me. My house is a wealth object, and it is decreasing in value, regardless of what you hear on the business networks that, oh, housing is turning the corner and everything's hunky-dory, it's not, you know it and I know it. So I'm assuming that next year, after we finish the five-year process of increased taxes each of those five years, that our assessment's gonna drop. It's gonna decrease by thirty bucks. If I'm wrong, I think that what you may be doing is creating the mindset that, you know, I may not be able to afford to live here anymore. And I know three people on my neighborhood, my neighborhood, two of them on my block, who have sold their houses and moved across the street. Now, to compare condo fees to a tax or, or, I consider nine hundred and some odd dollars of tax, to compare condo fees to that is just, I, I, I don't think it's fair. It is a cost of living that I have to bear in order to maintain my living standard and the living standard for my wife. So what I would like to do is, I would like the board to consider, because I think Bob's invested in this, and he should be, that's his job, but he does work for us, and I appreciate him saying that he works for us. I would ask the board to take some serious consideration as to why, i, if this is really the proper time to put additional pressure on the taxpayers of the state of Maryland, and always remember one thing, those increased taxes only went in one direction, and that is increased expenditures on the side of the individual employee who may work for the entity whereby we, the taxpayers who pay that, get no direct benefit. And I ask you to keep that in mind, and keep us here in Ocean Pines, don't drive us across the street. Thanks.
Thank you, John. (applause) Come on. I am sitting there, no. My name's Phil Sheridan, not Sherman. Sorry. Three ninety-eight Ocean Parkway. Just a couple of things, then I'll let somebody else get in before I go into my detail. I respect all the work that goes into the budget, I mean, I know, then they're done, seen it. I just think we've got to, it hasn't, over the years, and I'm not talking this year, probably three years ago for it, but the budget hasn't been all that close to reality, particularly some of the ingredients in it. We could, we could be sitting pretty if these other ingredients, I thought, are not there. But I respect you going through it. Who, who allows whatever improvement is in here to run over their budget? Who allows? Yeah. I'm likely in charge of the departments, the personnel. Do you approve all expenditures over their budget? I, I approve all expenditures across the board with, for, you know, there are certain levels I have, the board has to be involved in, but ultimately, it's my responsibility, all of them. All of the, all the? Absolutely. I accept that responsibility. The pool, I'll go with it later, but I read we're, we're gonna want it as a subcontract to the company that's building the yacht club. Yes. Is that gonna be a pass through or are they gonna put management profit on it? For the, I can answer, I wanna make sure I answer the right question, ask me that a little differently so I understand. Well, if you're, if I have a subcontract. Right. In my proposal. Yes. I usually have a management fee to wash that subcontractor and a profit on it in the bottom. Yeah, there's, we're talking about two things. The goal right now is, we're, we're finalizing a contract on the yacht club, the main facility now. That contract's pretty much wrapped up, legal review, all that, the next step is board review, so that'll be cycled after, or directed to look at, question, comment, concern. My goal is to do an addendum to that for the, for the Harkins portion of the work, which is site planning, demo, those type of things. We put the contract out for the pool to bid, those contracts have come in, right, it's our intent to assign that contract, once it's awarded, to the Harkins contractor for oversight. Speaking with them, there would be minimal, and this is what they're working on now, very minimal costs associated with them overseeing the subcontractor, in your case, the pool contractor, because it's to their benefit, Harkins' benefit, to oversee the entire project, to make sure the bulkheads are lined up, to make sure the pavers are lined up, to make sure, it, it's more beneficial for them to open manage the entire project than to have another contractor come in and try to piece it together. Definition of minimal? I don't have it yet. No, the board had asked for that, Don Smith from Harkins is working on, on that part of it for us, yeah. And then you made a comparison to other locations around here. I personally don't know the details of any of those numbers on the, those locations. I don't know what they offer and don't offer, or what they have to pay for. We pay for our amenities to use them, they're not part of our dues. I don't know if it is part of someone else's dues or not. Yeah, it's, it's, the towns are pretty much what they are, you're not. Yeah, towns different. The HOAs, and again, Mr. Collins, it's condos, so really try to work with HOAs, that's why I didn't include condos in Ocean City, from condo fees, which he's absolutely right, you can't compare those. I do try to pull out the, the top HOAs, just like us, an HOA, and give an HOA comparison. And some do include some of the grass cutting, as, what's that word? But the grass cutting, I mean, that's probably the biggest, grass cutting, as example, and the park snow removal, sidewalk cleaning, those type of elements. And I just, this first time, I just wanna close this one with the gentleman before us, I know that, I think it was last year's budget meeting, I said pretty much the same, we're comparing it to social security, that's great, but that, that's not the total realism of what we're facing today. And people are losing their houses, they're losing their jobs, they're coming in here, they're an engineer, now they're scraping McDonald's. And I said it last time, and I'll say it again, I think we've gotta look at those aspects because you're gonna run people out over time. Being a, I want to just make my own opinion here, but being a community where half the people don't live here, and many rent their units out, it's very difficult to use, to use the word a premier community, because the people who aren't here, a lot of them don't do what they should do to their properties, that's right. All they wanna do is make money. And I think we've gotta consider all these things. You know, we're not a Cadillac, and I don't think anybody wants to be a Cadillac, they wanna be a Ford, or, or whatever. Nice place, fun place, but not expensive place. Anybody else?
No.
He went the long way, man. He put the truck wrong. I don't wanna walk in front of ladies. They're running. They're running. They should, it is so loud in Maryland.
My name's Grant Helby, I live at fourteen forty-three Ocean Parkway. I've been around Ocean Pines about twenty years, and I've owned two homes, first home, then I've built another one in, in Mc Point. I've, I've purchased two other old homes, fixer-uppers, did exactly that and sold them, so I've, you know, tried to contribute to the community in that way. This is a lovely facility, thank goodness we have it. I don't remember what it cost, I think it was about a million bucks, one and a half.
One point seven.
Okay, and I know this is, pardon me, it's a wonderful alternative to the monstrosity that was planned before this became the, the community center. I think we were about to spend three and a half million for one down the way somewhere, we wound up at the end of that, hasn't been talked about much, but I think we wound up losing three hundred thousand dollars just in the plan on that one. So anyhow, we do have to keep, you know, the, the community deserves this, thank God for it, I, I use it frequently for my own activities. And I know that everyone here means well, Mr. Thompson and the board, and that, I think, I think, you know, I don't read, I'm not one of those people that reads the budget. When I, when the, when the press comes out and gives these detailed budget, budget numbers and so on, and columns and so on, I don't read them, I, I kinda make it a point, I don't really have time for that. But I do kinda look at the big picture, and I think I learned this year that we spent nine hundred fifty thousand dollars on the golf course, and then we lost four hundred thousand dollars. I think that's true. Correct me if I'm wrong, but not right now. I voted for the new yacht club, and I'm starting to regret it, I'm starting to wonder if that was, if that's really, if this is really the time in history to be doing that. But I realize that the contracts are in place and it shall happen, so, so I'm gonna, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna happen. But, you know, I recently, like all of you, recently received your assessments from the state of Maryland on your real estate. Well, my real estate's down, just like everyone else is, I don't know, from the time I built, it's down about forty percent. So the same thing, you know, we, people's retirement accounts in our nation, it's not just here, people are devastated. Everyone's retirement, people that, that have worked and saved and was planning to live off of something besides social security at the end of life, they've been devastated. It's not the same as it was back when two thousand and six or whenever you started showing the chart and the social security comparison and so on. Employment opportunities are almost nil. You've got people out here with college, college educations, happy to find a job at the, at the Walmart, or happy to find a job at the clerk in somewhere. It's not as it was a few years ago. Federal government sixteen trillion dollars in debt and will not stop spending, and God knows what more they're gonna ask of all of the people of the nation. The county last year increased our tax, tax rate by eleven percent. The state of Maryland, big deal, raised the toll, the tolls on the, on the bridge, it's only four bucks every time you cross the bridge, on millions of people, they robbed the highway funds so they can spend them up in Prince George's County so they don't come here. The cost of Medicare, God knows what's gonna happen with it, with people's healthcare going into the future. So my question, I guess, is, when are people at trusted officials at all levels of government, from our federal government, to our state government, to our county government, to our homeowners associations? When are these people that we trust with the power over our liberty, when are these people going to realize that they, we reached the limit? We don't wanna give up any more liberty, and we don't wanna give up any more money. So I believe that, that this is a, really a wrong time in history to be asking for an increase at all in our homeowner association. Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, sir?
Yep, mine'll be quick. Jack Barry, sixteen, Martinique Circle. Bob, as I come in here today, I see about four to five, maybe five to six pieces of brand-new equipment parked along out here and a brand-new truck. Are we overbuying or do we not have room for this stuff? Right outside the door, there's, there's, there's all brand-new equipment when I come in.
To be honest with you, it's very unnatural what you're referring to, pickup truck or a?
No, pickup truck is, is brand-new and it's marked Parks and Recs, Park and Recreation. But right outside here is some brand-new equipment.
We have a couple of vehicles out there, we replay, we rotate our fleet, our fleet's typically at ten years.
All right, my question was, are we overbuying, do we have that room? We don't have room for this stuff? We don't have room for the equipment, it's parked outside.
Oh, oh, where it's parked, I'm sorry, I was missing the question, we do, what happens is, is the equipment's where the, where it's being used, so we don't have someone sat that would have to go get it. The, the largest part of our, of our fleet is obviously public works with all the trucks and vehicles.
That's a long way off.
And how that public works. So we have a couple of vehicles here that Brad and Parks uses, it's assigned to them, so that's what's here. Obviously, our police department and, and the vehicles are assigned, and that's where they're located. It's battery use of the, from time, from sat time as well as mileage, fuel, having to go get it every day to move it to its location.
get it every day to move it to its location, it's fair to leave it at the location. The one that did come up recently, someone asked me about the two vehicles that are assigned to the yacht club, and they were right, I mean, they were over in the yacht club parking lot, with us being closed, subject to vandalism, anything else, nothing had happened. But we did move those two for our fleet, because they're going to sit for the next two and a half months, to public works. But the rest are assigned, wherever they're assigned is typically where they're located.
Okay, all right. And this is another quick one. Parks and Recreation used to be an amenity, and now I see you moved it over to?
Operation.
An operation, yeah. Parks and Recreation should always be an amenity, don't you think so?
Yeah, it's still an amenity.
It's still an amenity?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I thought you covered it here under an operations.
I think the left side you were looking at were revenue, more revenue-driven, and if you notice, there were a couple front, like tennis was pulled away from Rapid Park, they're still under that umbrella. I try to do them in light groupings, it's still an amenity. I did it from the expenditure, there's no significant income that comes in for Rapid Park, so it's more of an outflow, and that's why I tried to separate the two. The ones on the left side of the screen actually had the opportunity to generate revenue at a point, we're hoping, obviously, to break even at some point. That's why golf, yacht club.
If Parks and Recreation break even.
No, that's why, that's why I'd say you're on the right side. That's why I moved it to the right side, because I just realistically, it's an amenity with all it does, I don't see that as a break-even option. I see that always being something that we subsidize throughout our assessments, because they're everything they do. That's why I moved it to the right side this year.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir? Mr. Clark, are you talking as a board member?
No, and I'll make that clear. Marty Clark, 855 Ocean Parkway. I'm speaking as an association member, not representing the board of directors in any way. And I have a couple of comments, if I may, everybody knows I'm a stickler for accuracy and detail. The five-year funding plan, if I can address that first, was never, ever a $30 assessment increase. It was a $30 part of our assessment. So it's not an automatic $30 increase, never was. Secondly, when you were doing the slide percentages, social security increase of assessment, Bob ignores the $30 increase. We can get away with that, White Star would be still claiming that the Titanic was a successful voyage, because they could ignore the iceberg. Lastly, the budget projects operational profits at amenities. We have, we're three for three, in the last three years, we have lost money in our amenities operations, not even including depreciation. Last year, the projection was that the amenities would make $46 a member. If forecasts hold, we will have lost $25 a member. It's a pretty big swing. Now, I'll give it, we had six times what was projected golf losses, but an L, but it's not an excuse. I just don't think that from a minus 25 to a plus 19 is realistic. That's just my own opinion. The board will play that one out, thank you.
Good morning. My name is John Roder, 186 Sandy Hook Road. On the definition of our community, your first slide, you referred to it as a resort community. I think you're offensive that, I don't think our community should be considered, especially the infrastructure and everything we try to do, on transient people that come here to rent a piece of property, or own a piece of property, and only come here once a year. I believe your direction should be towards the permanent aspect of the community. Question, next question, beyond roads. I understand you have changed the rebuilding road to a paving, from a 10-year cycle to a 15-year cycle. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
How do you feel that's going to impact the infrastructure, and all of the people that use the roads, which everybody does use the roads? How do you feel that's going to be impacted?
No, that's a great question. If you follow the state roads program, road replacements every 20 years. Our road replacement program was much better than that, at half or 50%, we were doing 10-year replacements. With the funding solution, which was the pass-through tax that Mr. Helby pointed out, we're no longer getting, so we had to look at that real strongly, so to what, how else can we tackle this, and still maintain our roads at a high standard? So we took an average, you know, we didn't go to the 20-year cycle, we said, all right, what can we get away with? And we do, at least for the time being, have a potential funding solution, the casino fund, the board has to elect to do that each year. So that's why we feel moving to the 15 still keeps us in better condition than the state or county roads, still keeps us ahead of that schedule, and still gives us decent roads to be on.
Let me ask you a question about the actual contractor that did Sandy Hook Road.
Yes, sir.
The contract that they're operating under, so I'm trying to ask you a question.
Okay.
Were they supposed to, or were, do you believe they did grind the roads before paving?
They do a milling process, some heavier, some lighter, depending on the road, the depth of the current asphalt, if they feel that it adhered to the asphalt. We used that particular contractor on several other times in the past, and had very good experience with them.
I stood in front of my house and watched them pave it, and they just paved right over the existing road. So, you know, if you feel that they're out there grinding it, you need to watch a little bit closer.
No, understood, and I'll follow up with public works on that, but the reason we go to third-party contractor, obviously, we don't want to be taping our roads, you go to the experts and do.
Well, I did follow up with public works, and stood right in the road, and we talked about, for example, parts where roads join, Pinehurst and Sandy Hook as an example, the way they did that is about a five-inch drop. If you, in the dark, and elderly people that can't see real well, probably as much as us, if you spin off that road, you're going to slice your tire.
What corner was that?
Sandy Hook.
That's one.
No, that's fine, I'm just retelling it.
Any place you go, in Beacon Hill, Pinehurst, Sandy Hook, same thing in this. So what I'm trying to say to you is, please, if you feel your public works is overseeing the work that was done there, not true.
If I could interrupt you for a second, we, now in public works, we have an outside engineer that goes back to check the work, separate from us, to validate the work being accomplished, to make sure it's meeting contract, make sure we're not, you know, we're getting what we were supposed to.
Well, I hope that you've put a lot of oversight effort into that, and don't assume that it's happening, please.
No, and we do, but I'll follow up on the milling part of it.
Okay, next slide. I've been led, believe, and sort of overheard, that your financial advisors feel that about 80% of the population of Ocean Pines feels quite good about the financial processes, and there's only about 20% that are naysayers, and disgruntled. Let me give you my perspective of the Ocean Pines right now. I think there's about 15, I think there's four categories of people that live here. So if you take the top one, have good discretionary spending capabilities, and they have high expectations, and they have big investment, and that's the expected. The bigger the investment, the higher the expectation. Then you, I think that makes up about 15%. Then you have the second category, that not quite as much discretionary, still the high expectations, that's another 15%. So that's 3% of the problem. You know, I'm not making any comments, other than that's my observation. The middle, the third group is about 40%. I feel that's about where I'd be, realistic, don't have the high expectations, and don't have the discretionary spending. And then I think there's about another 30% of that last category, where they don't use the facilities, they have very, very limited fixed income, and, you know, they are really struggling right now. So, you know, when you started this structure, you think, don't, please, don't think that 80% of Ocean Pines feels they're very comfortable with much of what you said today. Next slide. Referendum, you had a fantastic job of Selton, now, now you're into project management. One thing to be a seller, you've got these great skills there, being a project manager and an operations manager, that's a whole different ball of wax, and I ask you, please, hold up on that, because every time you don't make a good decision, it comes right out of here. And I would have, you know, I would have been so happy, I thought, you know, I think everybody in Ocean Pines felt that the Ocean Pines, Yacht Club needed to be faking weight. But, you know, you had one, you know, two choices, I could either vote for the top, or I could vote for nothing. Had you and the board said, John, here's a middle ground, you know, just this building right here is a good example, as comments made before about the original concept was the grandiose 4.5 million dollar facility down at the sports court. This came about here, people use it, people love it, and people feel it was a good investment. You are going to hit, when you hit, the large-scale facility built at the yacht club, you better watch out, because people are going to be after your butt. I tell you, that's about.
No, I get it, I got you, I got you.
You know, you think that that little one has been a sinkhole for money, the bigger and the better and everything else, you better really have a business plan that generates the revenue.
That's right.
Because, and if there's one thing that gets you run out of town, that's the place.
That's right.
Well, the golf course might give it 2%. Next slide. Amenities, you know, there's, amenities are great. Out of our pockets, we fund the capital part of amenities, that's sort of to be expected. But what you keep forgetting about is that we also, to use them after we have built them, maintain them, you know, we have to pay increasing fees separately to use them. And so, don't just think about amenities as a capital expense to the public here, you got the other half of it. And the last thing I would like to say to you is that, again, I've commented a bit to the board, but in my personal opinion, the best thing to do with that golf course is to find a company, an owner, a venture capitalist, whoever, and say, I'm going to give this to you for a dollar a year, I'm going to lease it to you for 30 years, you're going to have the expense to, any expense that comes up, you're going to have it, any profit that comes up is yours. We would get a good golf course, they would take the risk and the profit. But the main thing that it would do, it would remove from our community this god-awful grinding thing that so many people, if you're a bit of a problem. I would love to live in a community where there isn't this constant friction. So anyways, good luck.
Mr. Roder, I asked you, you mentioned my financial advisors, who were you referring to? Just wondering, that was an interesting comment.
I feel that you have.
Just so I understand, because I don't play.
Yes, I feel that you have, I would view it as a rascuny, as you recall from history, and that's peak downside. I feel that in fact, he is going to be the hidden advisor in this group, in these Ocean Pines, that we need transparency. And that's who I was referring to.
Thank you for your understanding. I do now, I wasn't sure, I wrote it down. Thank you. Yes, sir. Other public comments?
Good morning. My name's Bill Sutherland, I'm at 46 Pen Tail Drive, I've lived the place in 99, it's been our primary residence since about 2004. Last year, we got a tax increase, they said it was only 7.7%. When I got my tax bill, it went up over 10%. It went up $449 from previous year. The new assessment drops the higher rate down to a, it drops it down $322. So the township or county is still getting $127 more a year than what I was paying before. Now, from what I understand, you know, with the roads and all, that they've taken away a lot of the funding for roads here, now you're going to use the casino money to help pave the roads. Well, I'm not sure, but I think I read in the paper, we were getting, what, about $500,000 a year for paving the roads?
No, we spent $550 this year, that was an accumulation over almost a year and a half of casino funds.
Yeah, what about, you know, then the county stopped giving the?
The pass-through?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't, we got, I think it was over $500. Yeah, but how much do, didn't we get 10 grand or something from the county? What do we get for rentals?
I think we got about what we got with that.
What, I'm sorry, I think we're hearing two different questions, ask me it again? No, I'm not trying to be smart, I'm just.
No, no.
Here's what I can tell you, we don't, we no longer get the pass-through, we used to get 300,000 to 400,000 a year.
Right.
It stopped about four years ago.
Yeah.
We got, because the county's not getting it from the state.
Why?
Sir, I don't run the state, I can't answer that.
We're still paying our taxes?
We are, it's.
And none of the money's coming back?
I can't, I have strong personal feelings until that one, I think it's wrong, but I think most of us do, so I can't, I can't fix that. What I can tell you, though, is moving forward, what we did is, we had casino money.
Well, the way I look at it is, you know, they're giving us the money from the casinos, they go and they give us 10%, and they take 100% away.
It's wrong, no matter how you look at it, I agree.
And it's not that, you know, the taxes aren't still being paid, where's the money going?
Mr. Helby?
I don't think you're giving an argument for me by here, by here's feeling.
The other thing is too, I just got my homeowner's insurance, that went up over 10%. And I complained to State Farm about that, and I let them know that I was going, you know, possibly seek insurance for another, that pretty much went out the door, because everybody that I talked to, they were either going up anywhere from 40% to 50% more than what I was paying, or I couldn't get it at all, they wouldn't insure me, because I have waterfront property.
Stanleywood State Farm? I haven't heard of it.
Don't let your flood insurance count, don't do it.
Yeah, I got you.
Don't do it.
The other thing I want to talk about is, I think I mentioned to you before, about the bulkheads. Any new bulkheads that get replaced should be replaced at a higher level than what they are now, and all the bulkheads in Ocean Pines should be at the same altitude as what the rest of them are, not some higher or lower than others. Because we've seen over here on the, where between the woodtuck?
Yes, sir.
How the water point came up over the bulkhead and halfway across the road. At my home, the water only come up to the top of the bulkhead. But in previous storms, I have had it over the bulkhead. And the only, the problem with raising the bulk- And the only, the problem with raising the bulkheads, essentially as waterfront property is going to have to raise their house. They're going to have to have someone jack the house up and put, uh, more foundation in. Plus, the ground level's going to have to be raised, and the roads are going to have to be raised.
A lot of work.
Yeah. I think that's about it.
Thank you.
Billy, twenty-two Nottingham Lane. I'm hoping up a sore subject. How come are so many people owe assessments like nine hundred thousand dollars? And that, you know, that reflects on the people who pay theirs. I've been here twelve years, I've never missed a month. My wife wouldn't let me miss one day unless her do. And I can't understand why nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars somewhere in that number is owed by people who live in Ocean Pines.
We're, we're fortunate in one way. We're well over ninety-five percent of the people pay timely, no issues. So, we're very, very fortunate there and appreciative of that. And we've been talking about economic hard times has impacted a lot of votes. I can't speak to several hundred people, it's every individual case, nor would I care to. I do speak with them on a regular basis, you know, individuals will come in, we're trying to set up payment plans. Part of the challenge is, part of the significant increase year over year isn't necessarily new people, it's made new people being added to the list, it's the carryover from previous people getting in another year deeper. And that's what we're trying to figure out how to manage our way out of it. The board has taken a pretty strong stance recently on, on increasing our collection efforts through small claims court and potentially publishing names, and that was passed at a recent board meeting. So, the board's looking at, they're taking a different approach this year, and we'll see if that makes sense.
I, I couldn't understand, how come some people have ten or twelve years? I mean, I, I just don't, I know my neighbors...
Ten or twelve years. I mean, I, I just look at the account report, six grand. We have a couple over that, but I think there's a window there.
Well, anyway, I just wanted to bring to somebody's attention.
Oh, no, I'm well aware of it. I'm well aware of it, sir. All right, anybody else?
Yeah, I'm the white.
Hey, Phil.
You know who to listen to, that's that.
I'm Sunny D and live at twenty-two Nottingham. I'm coming in from another angle. I'm the chairperson for Ocean Pines Yacht Club Scholarship Fund, and I work with Stephen Decatur High School, and most recently with Delmarva Education Foundation. And bring it down into Ocean Pines. We've been talking about the, you know, the increase in expenses for Ocean Pines, but how about medical care, cost of living, and the elderly in Ocean Pines, from what I've read, are decreasing. You know, they're moving out, they may be dying off, I'm sorry, but, however, in the last year, in talking to different people, Dr. Andrews being one, Anders being one, I have not talked to the union superintendent. It appears that in Ocean Pines, we have a very high number of renters, a very high number of foreclosures, people behind on taxes. And a third of our students from Worcester County come from Ocean Pines. That puts us in a situation with Grant and Jack saying, you know, these people are suffering. I mean, I know one family from Stephen Decatur that had to sell their house and rent to stay here, because the school systems are so good. And I think when you all consider this, think about that, this is the education side. And, you know, we want our young families to stay here, we want them to be productive. But, you know, it's not going that way right now.
Thank you. All right, before I get depressed...
Chip Vertino, ninety-eight Nottingham Lane. Bob, could you clarify, did I understand correctly that the board is considering requesting a hundred thousand dollars more from the county this year that could help possibly alleviate any increase in assessments? Did I understand that?
Well, you understand that the board is going to focus on improving the amount of funds that the county provides to us.
The twelve dollars that you showed as a, could possibly be a reduction?
Yes.
Was that being considered for this year?
Yes, but, but here, think about the unique, and this is why the board is still kicking around trying to grow. The feeling is, we should have the opportunity to get more money from the county. Our tax base, I mean, we've got the largest community in the county, yet in some areas we don't receive what we perceive as our fair share. So, the board believes we should be looking at that, and I do it as well. With that being said, the challenge is, you include that as a reduction this year's assessment increase, but then you don't receive the funds.
Well, that was my, that was the reason for my question. The county is on a different budgeting cycle than we are.
They are. Ours gets approved first.
Exactly. So, if the board is expecting to ask for those funds, even if they get them, it's not going to impact this year's budget, correct?
The board, well...
Well, the board...
The board could direct, here's, here's what could happen. The board could say, Bob, we vote confidently, put it in the budget, put the hundred thousand additional grant fund or funding solution from the county, and reduce your budget, whatever that does.
Accordingly.
Yeah, twelve dollars. And that certainly could happen.
Okay. My second question is, I just want to clarify, you had mentioned when you were talking about the thirty dollar, the fifth year of the five-year funding plan. The thirty dollar increase per year, you say goes away, if I understood correctly, but in reality, the hundred fifty dollars over the past five years will remain in the assessment going forward.
Yeah, it doesn't go away.
Okay, I just want to, I just want to make sure I understood...
I'm sorry if there was a miss there. The incremental increases of thirty dollars was set to be on a five-year solution. At the end of the five years, it taps out, it stops, but the increase...
Right.
The amount that's built in remains in the...
The hundred fifty dollars, I just wanted to make sure we're up on the same page.
Yeah, you got it.
And I just want to make an observation. You had done the comparison to social security increases.
Yes.
And you calculated it with the increase, including the five-year funding plan of the FAL. But there's another segment of the population which my neighbor in Nottingham Lane pointed out, and that is that families with children are also being squeezed, and their cost of living increases as well, and I think that needs to be part of the calculation, not that you need to do another chart, but I do hope that the board is keeping that in mind. As I see three of the board members over there, I hope they are. That is certainly, for us who still have school-aged children, we're getting squeezed from many ends as well. So, thank you.
Any other from before, no, you've had your piece.
I went quick.
You always come up close, though. Sometimes it's three times.
I'm going to read the newspaper too.
Always three times. If it's nice and how great we do it, four or five times.
Yeah, dude. Go ahead. Couple things.
There be good.
There be good. Four is four, no. Bill Sheridan, three ninety-eight Ocean Park, wait. This newspaper's for reference. And...
Probably not very big.
No, 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 it works out. Progress. The forty-three dollar increase, for a lot of people, is more than the social security increase this year. So, I mean, you've got to look like what's happening now. And there's really no inflation, it's, it's our own problem. The, oh, also, in that article, Kelly Casper came out, and that group came out and says, yeah, we're losing money this year, but we're hoping to make money by two thousand and fourteen. I hope they're a little better, more professional than just have to say hoping, and we all got to pray for them to break even in two thousand and fourteen. And I don't think they're going to do it. We know they're not going to do it. It's been seven years, eight years, I don't know how many, with a lot, ten years. With a lot of different people trying to do a lot of different things. This is a rental community, basically, half who've already said it. You go to the boardwalk, you take your kids to McDonald's or BJ's and the peach and stuff. You know, I don't want to build a, as we do for most things, an amenity for other people from wherever else. Then the pool. I don't know what happened, I don't know what happened to the pool, I don't know why insurance did...
Really?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. The pool.
Yes.
Why wasn't it covered by insurance?
A loophole in insurance, nothing we can do about it, and not even prior. There's the, the National Flood Insurance Program has like, it's what we are flood insurance. The loophole is, pools are basically excluded from the program. You can't go to a primary carrier for it unless it's primary on the entity, our primary's the yacht club. So, with that being the primary, we can't put any coverage on the pool. And we've had it revalidated three times. So, we're, we're still looking at other ways. I'm sure there's a, anytime you want something, there's someone out there willing to sell it. We're looking to see if there's any possible way to get insurance, especially since we're putting the new pool in.
Was that a change, or was that an oversight by our attorney?
There is no change or oversight, there's a gap in insurance for coastal communities. One of the gentlemen was talking about his insurance going up. Coastal communities have been hammered over the last, you know, seven, eight years, and we're all feeling those effects. And those insurance programs are tightening, the loopholes are, are, are there, there's just so much with insurance community right now. So, there's no oversight, it just was a loophole, and people wouldn't worry about. Our pool, let's go a step further though. Realistically, we had a forty-year pool that we identified two years ago and budgeted money to do some work for that pool. Okay, to the surrounds and to the, to the pump house anyway. We have a forty-year old pool, it's made of gunite, gunite's basically, you know, concrete with rebar in it. Over time, it starts to fail, your gunite starts to weaken, has some cracks, we had sprawling concrete. So, realistically, we were nearing the end line for the pool either way. It was a poor happenstance, but we're going to make the best of it.
As you originally desired, just a pool going to go behind the yacht club?
Originally desired?
You desired to have the pool behind the yacht club, if I understand it, originally in the plans?
No, no. I, I never...
Is it always going to be in the same location?
It's always going to be in the same location. The only thing we looked at with one of our original drawings is, is the pool sits this way, turning it slightly, much like we did the yacht club, but we're not going to do that.
So, why are we doing it the same place when we can't get insurance on it?
Well, again, see, the insurance option, then we'll save that for...
Okay, you said you can't get insurance on it. All right. The five hundred thousand dollar loss at golf, doesn't include the capital improvements, right?
Correct.
Okay. How much is it in total, do you know? With capital improvements? That we spent this year?
Well, we spent a million plus five hundred, a million five. I mean, if that's what you're, you're calculating it.
I'll skip that. I'm running people out. The last thing is...
I had a question.
The last, the last thing, just the last, big headlines here. Budget Committee Chair Questions Whether New Yacht Club Will Pay For Itself. That person still alive?
Isn't that person still alive?
I guess Marty's wrong right now. Is that true? It hasn't ever, in the past?
Mr. Hudson is, is working to provide national guidelines, he's trying to help with our budgeting, and he's actually helped me a lot, know Dennis the whole time. He's looking at, at some industry standards, and when he was calculating, and again, I don't know when that quote was given, but I do know it's a, that calls back and talks again, so, you know, part of it's when you're looking at the sheer size of the facility, and you calculate square footage against national standards. Well, a lot of places don't have a pool adjacent to it with the space to support the pool. A banquet facility on top of the restaurant, if you, if you carve it in half, there's nuances that we have that doesn't make, it doesn't fit clearly into the box of the standard to go against the national average, so. You know, there's nuances, and Ocean Pines is unique in many ways, that has to be one of them.
Oh, one last thing, you talked, someone was talking about the gym over here with this building.
Yes.
I haven't been to the gym for a couple of months now, but that floor, it's got bubbles all over it.
You used first of early, it had bubbles before, we had to change the heat.
I guess, maybe it's been something in the last couple of months that's been done, but when I was in there, it had bubbles all over the floor.
Sunny hasn't mentioned it to me, but I'll tell you, we had it bubble up before, and it's basically in the winter months, we have to, the, the pool has heating pipes through it to keep the, it's just part of the heating process here, and it, and they have to adjust the temperature just a little bit.
What, the pool?
What's at the floor? The floor has heating...
Oh, the floor, I said, the pool, okay.
And we can turn down the element just slightly, and you no longer have the bubbles.
Okay, well, there were...
So, if we've adjusted, we, we adjust up or down depending on time of year a little bit.
Because that could be dangerous, that's all.
Yes, no, I appreciate it. Do you mind if I ask that? You should don't, because I always, we talked about the increases. Question I have for you all, since you're willing to come out and talk to us. We, we put a referendum out there, we're on a five-year plan for this thirty dollar increase. And based on some of the things I had, you guys share with us this morning, question I would have, if, if we had sixty-eight percent respond to the referendum on the yacht club, and Mr. Hely, your point, you don't know if you would have voted that way again, but with that much of a response, two to one in favor of, how, and our funding solution being the thirty dollars, okay, of the five-year plan, that's our major projects, if I'm sitting back looking, I'm trying to listen and be responsive to what you're saying, but if we made a promise to redo the facility, and was supported by an overwhelming vote, and our funding solution was this, is it the group's thought here that we maybe defer that funding solution?
Now, what we're trying to point out to you is simply, that above and beyond that thirty dollars, above and beyond that, you are increasing the dues.
Okay.
We've got to live with that. I don't agree with it, Grant doesn't agree with it, probably most of the people here do not agree with it.
Okay.
But that being said, that's behind us.
So, the thirty dollars...
We cannot discuss that any further. That's behind us.
I'm trying to understand.
But, yeah, I understand. No, it's, it's, it's very open that you're doing this, and it's, it's complimentary. It's very complimentary.
I like the air you're blowing for.
The, the bottom line is, I think what people are saying is, defer any other increases for now. And you may not even be able to do it the year, the following year. Because my estimate is, based on the people who I rely on for information, are telling me that this is going to be a tough year, and next year's going to be worse.
Next year...
Yeah, that's what you hear. So, all I'm saying to you is, let's, let's maintain the baseline, and let's everybody pay, pay a little bit of price.
So, baked in, the baked in thirty dollar assessment, I know some of the board members are probably going to hit me when I'm asked it, but I'm, I'm just going for my dollars. I'm not speaking for them at all. So, the thirty dollar increase, sorry.
We're not hitting you.
The thirty dollar increase...
For yourself.
I said, I clearly said, I'm speaking for myself, it is more acceptable in the five-year funding solution.
But, but, but the, but the, here's the confusion. People who talk to me say, oh, boy, we're done with this five-year thirty dollar increase.
Right.
Now my dues are going to go back.
They're not.
You just said no.
They're not.
It's, it's fixed in. So, what you've done is you've created additional revenues that was supposed to be, what do you want to call it, a sinking fund or a reserve or what have you, but you have, you have created that, and all, and we all being human beings, if you and I are in the private, back in the private sector...
Yes.
And you receive a twenty-five percent increase because of the great job that you did...
Right.
And I receive a twenty-five percent increase because of the great job that I did...
Right.
How much money are we going to spend? Up to that twenty-five percent, it might be education for our children, it might be an additional vacation, it may be a new BMW, don't know.
Okay.
But, the problem is that you now have this increased revenue, and there is a terrible, terrible temptation to spend it, right up to the limit.
That's what I'm, sorry, and, and that's what I was wanting to where we were. Let me make sure, maybe let me clarify something that apparently isn't completely evident. The funds of the five-year funding solution that was created and in place are carved out, specific funds for major projects for your quarter of the year, major. They can't pull it, again, board can do anything they want in some way, I guess, but the funds were set aside to, for replacement reserves for major things, yacht club, country club, we can use it for roads in the future, we had major capital expenditures. So, so the, the thought is, we're under... So the thought is, we're undercapitalized for replacement of our major facilities. We've got these covered, we're going to have to look. So if you look at what's still out there, we're underfunded for those items. So the money's not, and to your point, for the sinking fund, you get to a point of half, you expect what you want to spend it on, now it keeps building up, you can use it for other things. That's not how this is structured. It's structured to be used for major capital projects, the infrastructure of this organization. So, you know, you all, certainly through your vote for your board members, through meetings like this, through your phone calls to them, if we deviated from that, your recourse is to come to these meetings, talk to your board members, and go in a different direction. But the purpose was, was pretty much fenced off for major projects. So it's a little different than sinking fund, it's more of a replacement fund.
Do the math, Bob. Eighty-four-hundred times forty-three.
I do the math daily.
Four, $400,000 in additional revenue. Ballpark. Eighty-four-hundred times forty-three. It's approximately $400,000 in additional revenue, each and every year, year after year.
It's actually starting this year, this year, it's a million one a year. This was the funding for the five-year funding plan, that goes set aside for the, for our major capital assets. So, I mean, I know, but I look at it all the time.
No, 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 I'm not questioning that.
Yeah, it's a million one. It's a lot of money. But we're underfunded, if you look at 10 years out, one of the things the board has done this year, which is, I think, going to surprise folks.
Bob, you're missing the point. We're not talking about 10 years out, we're talking about three to four years out. Let's wait and see where this settles. Let's try and figure out how, listen, we may need one another as a community. If the wheels do come off the cart, we may all need one another. You know, the doctors, the lawyers, the farmers, the mechanics, we may all have to come together as a community, our own community, and take care of each other. I hope it doesn't happen. I hope the heck up wrong. I hope some other people are wrong.
Here's what I'll tell you, the reason, our reason to start mentioning the 10-year plan, is we are looking at, and the board has said by June, they want to look a long-range plan to indeed figure out if that five-year funding solution is enough, if it's too much, if we need to redirect. Without looking, we can look at two or three years, but that's very unrealistic if you're looking at long-term budgeting, and you know that, so I'm not, we're not differing on that. The reason I bring up the 10-year, is the board has said, by June, provide us a long-range look at our facilities, at our capital projects, so we can do, see, because we're in last year's five-year funding solution, we know where we are, we know that's a million one a year. What does that going to mean for us not just now, or next year, or the year after, seven, eight, nine, 10 years down the road? How does that impact us? Is there enough, is there not enough? So there are going to be more things in the next six months that are really going to help us moving forward, make those good decisions based on facts of what's going to happen moving forward. I was asked about $30 because I want to make sure I understood where the, you know, how the room felt. Mr. Hely?
I think one consideration, you continue to speak about funding today, getting money from people today.
Right.
That's your mindset. Many of your facilities that you're talking about perhaps are going to be built and then used for 40 years, theory. I would offer you that it's just, it's appropriate, instead of taking money out of the pot right here now, and then using it for 40 years while all of us are fundamentally dead.
Realistic.
I think it's, I think it's just as appropriate to begin with long-range money, in other words, borrowing money, paying off the interest, or paying off the servicing the debt.
Sure.
During that 40 years.
Well, you're talking mortgages, why not doing that one?
Hey, hey, listen, you're, what's interesting, your points is following a couple ways, okay? My background, Mr. Thompson, because it's the lending side of the house, I'm all about mortgages, lending the money, being a banker for 20 plus years, lend the money, lend the money. One of the unique things I've figured out, being here in Ocean Pines, is we feel a little bit smarter about it. Here's what I'm saying, and this actually turns out to hook you by thinking back to my grandmother and grandfather, Ocean Pines reminds me of old-time banking with passbook savings account. We're making small, see, you know, we're making small deposits each year out of our assessment for future purchases. We're not going to make those purchases unless we can afford them. I got to tell you, for me, that was a hard change when I stepped in this role, because I'm more used to lend the money. First thing I did was start looking, what can we borrow, and how do we reduce, you know, how do we reduce the assessment, go in that path? But we have the payments on it anyway, it ends up uniquely close to doing it the way Ocean Pines has in the history. And I got to tell you, I've learned something, that old passbook savings account has saved a lot of people over the years. I've learned a lot more from the more mature that did it that way, than my fancy calculating as a finance guy at the bank, and Ocean Pines has been doing it that way. Kind of unique, I mean, it's, we're financially strong right now, because smarter people in the past made that type of decision. So now, I understand what you're saying, you know, I may not be here in 30 or 40 years, I mean, not from passing away. But, no, but realistically, are we paying it forward, are we paying it back, what's our fair share? But we're all, we all have access, I shouldn't say we're all using, we all have access to these amenities now, that someone else paid for in the past. So now, we're kind of putting money away so we can pay for it for the future. It's kind of just a different mindset, but I appreciate exactly what you said, because I did look at it, and it enlightened me a little bit last, about 18 months ago, when I finally came to that realization, the simplest term was passbook savings account. So, okay. I appreciate you all taking time to come out in the cold morning, and certainly share your input, very much appreciated. Does the press have any, a lot of times it is, no. Anybody else for the greater good? Anybody here? Thank you all for being here, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good presentation.
Hey, Grant.
Good work! And don't go there, Mike. Whoa. Hey, still looking, looking good.